Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the meeting of the school committee. I'll call the meeting to order. The first order of business is public comment. And again, if you have a comment or a question, you can put it in the link and we will get it. We'll try to answer them throughout tonight's meeting. Next up is school committee members. Does anyone have anything they wish to speak about? Ms. Farley, I know you do.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Lynch and I had the pleasure of doing a walkthrough on the first day of in-school, which was Tuesday morning. I was just so pleased, honestly. I want to commend every single person for the last six months of their hard work because it was very evident walking through all of the schools. We started at the Nichols Middle School and we met with Mrs. Latander and some of her staff. We took us through and all of the students were engaged already, getting to know their teachers. They were following procedures. We witnessed some mask breaks in effect. It was just great to see that. We made our way to the high school and we saw Mr. Brannigan and his staff. We took a quick walk. And again, just seeing students really just in their element. And you know, it's hard to see their faces because they have their masks on, but you could still feel the excitement around everywhere. And making our way to the complex with Ms. White and Mr. Thompson and all of their staff was just truly incredible. That's where my daughter is and my boys are at the high school. As a parent, I was just so pleased to see that the energy is still there, the excitement's there. And it was just such a pleasure to do and I'm so grateful that I had a chance to do that.
Thank you, Mrs. Farley. Anyone else have anything they wish to bring up? Seeing no one, I will move on. The next item on our agenda is the new co-presidents of the M E A. Samantha and Kate, welcome, guys.
Thank you. I'll start. We've just finished our first four days of live doing remote teaching. There's still a few students we haven't been able to touch base with, but nothing like we saw in the spring. So if everyone involved is getting involved to get these kids in the classroom, there's not that many as far as I know. There's still a few holes in some of the schedules, which we're working on to fill those. Many teachers at the high school have taken on a fourth class and giving up their prep to be able to fill classes, which is it's good to have the teachers to be able to do that. Teachers are starting to feel the fatigue. It's a lot of work to get set up and doing this remote learning. So hopefully we'll be able to get a smooth ride here soon. The computers and the internet. We're still having a few glitches here and there, but then again, it's the internet. So you have to expect that, whether it's a personal computer or a school computer. But everything's being worked on and we're things like.
Blitching right now. From my perspective, we had our students return in the two cohorts this week. I started out in-person for two days, Tuesday and Wednesday. And today was my first day at home. I'll be home again tomorrow with my cohort. It's pretty quiet in the halls. I am in the former sixth grade hall when we were sixth graders there. And there are only two classrooms in use out of the 13 that should be in use. So it's pretty quiet there. Hundred percent of my students were present on the first day. Ninety percent of them have devices already at home. So today, on our first day, I was able to see almost all of my students. One student did join on her mom's cellphone for the whole day. I didn't get to actually see her, but I got to hear her and she got to participate in most of it, which was great. We're tackling the dismissal times, which every year it's typical for the beginning of the year that, you know, getting everybody on the right bus and getting everybody who's supposed to be a walker in the walker line and everybody who's supposed to be a pickup in the pickup area. But we expect that, you know, with the much lighter bus ridership, that that will get resolved really quickly. We're hoping by the end of next week that this will speed up. As Mrs. Farley said, it's hard to see them behind their masks. So when I was home with them today, it was awesome. I could see every one of them right there on my screen. I could hear them clearly. So there is a little silver lining, as Mr. Lynch and I were talking about too, having them at home because they're right there with you. So that was great. As Sam said, a few technical glitches. There was some freezing up today. My computer died. So I will be keeping it plugged in tomorrow. And one student, like I said, was on her mom's cellphone all day. But you know, we're making the best of it and they really are overall super happy to be back. So it's going well so far.
Rich is muted.
You're muted. Thank you both. Even though, you know, like you're here tonight and I know you've both been working for essentially the past three weeks. So we thank you for all your hard work and efforts. So I'm glad to hear that it's going well.
Yeah, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for them? Mr. Oakley.
Thanks, both. It's really cool to hear about how the remote versus in-person is working out in practice. And I wondered if maybe you already said it, but if you could tell us one thing that went better than you expected and one thing that worked out worse than you expected.
I'll go first because I'm unmuted. Sam's gonna have to unmute. What went better than expected, I think, was the remote. Because in the spring, we didn't have all these expectations that we put into place with the kids about when they were going to be there. And my computer was on the whole day. We logged in at nine. We logged out right before they would have gone to specialist at 2:20. I kept my computer on the whole time. And so when they were off at lunch or when they were off on their recess break, I could hear them and they came back early to talk to each other, which was kind of neat. So that's what went better than expected. What went worse than expected, I hope, will be solved when we get this upgrade to Google Meet. And that was that by 10:05 a.m. that I had 258 comments in my chat. They were just excited to see each other, I guess.
Great, thank you.
One thing that went better than than expected was just all the kids and they were there. They were they were working. You know, in the spring, it was sporadic on when you would see kids come into the classrooms. But for the most part, they were there and it was really nice to see. Something that went worse than expected, just everyone just by the by fourth block, the fatigue of looking at the computer, even the teachers, it's there. It's real. And just being able to get up and move around and look at something other than the computer periodically. You know, you try to give them breaks, say, okay, get up and take a break. You know, go walk around or something, which I think is good. But the fatigue, computer fatigue is is real. And staring at the computer all day can can get to you. So but I think that, you know, we're gonna find balance.
Cool, thank you. And so much respect for you guys in having to kind of read the students and their energy levels and adjust. So thank you for doing everything you're doing.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Sam and Kate, thank you very much. We appreciate having you here and we'll see you next time.
Next week, right?
No, actually, what we're gonna do is we're gonna move out of next week and hopefully as long as the school community is okay with it, go to second and fourth as we have always been.
Perfect. I'll make a note in my calendar. Thank you for having us. I have something pertinent to say each time we come.
Thank you very much, Ben. We appreciate it. So the next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report. So I will turn it over to Ms. Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Good evening. I want to first comment on the fact that I want to send out the appreciation, my the appreciation of the entire school district to the teaching faculty and the support faculty for number one, the custodians and maintenance for the conditions of the building. It's A+. Number two, the ESPs, the support people, they're there for the kids and they're there. And their jobs have changed a little bit for the year, given the COVID pandemic. And they're there, all, most of them are there all five days of the week. And I want to thank the teachers for their spirit of cooperation. I think it's important. You saw it in their faces. I think they're happy to be back teaching. In a lot of communities in the Commonwealth, it's not the case. And there's some angst out there. And I think we're fortunate that we were able to work through an agreement that everybody signed off on. And it's not perfect for everyone, but it's one of those things that that we're moving on. And we have students, we have students at remote. And we have students full in. So all of three of our models are in place and we're moving forward. So I also wanted to comment. Teresa had mentioned that we had visited all five schools in the first day. I thought we'd go a little little quicker, but once you start talking to people and going into classrooms and singing along with Ms. Trotter in her first grade. Teresa has a very nice voice, by the way. And so we just had a blast in going through and talking with people and sort of getting a sense. And I think that from my purview, it was a positive sense and it was a positive feel and a positive vibe. Obviously, there's going to be some some trepidation, there's going to be some anxiety and that will continue. But I think once we get in and once everybody's been in, I think things will go even smoother. So I'm looking forward to that. So I want to report that from first students' point of view, the first few days have gone very well. You know, again, with some routing glitches, but none of our buses are overcrowded. All of our buses are appropriately spaced. Students are wearing masks. Masking in school has been fine, as far as I know. Obviously, concerns at certain areas, but from all reports from principals, and I've spoken with all of them this week, a number of occasions, things are going well. I did want to mention the fact that special education service delivery is a concern early on here with coverages. We had a number of, we expected more of our sort of our cohort one students to be fully in. And a lot of folks have chosen to keep those students home. So we're having some issue with some service delivery there. And we may have to add some COVID-related personnel. And that is something I can discuss with the chair and discuss with you folks also. But it may involve posting a couple of COVID-related positions. And we would submit through Plymouth County to get paid for those positions because they are directly COVID-related. There's no doubt about it. K-orientation was held the last two days and went well from all reports. I get some nice positive feedback from from parents to me directly. And we start our full day, first day of kindergarten tomorrow, which is great. So all in all, the first three days have gone well. We had our cohorts in, both cohorts have now been in. One for two days and the other one's going to be in for two days, only one day so far. And as Kate Lazarovich mentioned, she started her week with in-class, you know, both Tuesday and Wednesday, and now she's at home with that same group of students. And I think that's important because a lot of school districts aren't doing that. They split up A through L and M through Z. And they have half the kids and half the kids. Our kids are getting instruction every single day of the week, which is important. And I think that's that's an important point to make. And I certainly will continue to make it. And I think that that's something we did in our district that not a lot of districts or not most districts did not do. So look, you know, I think that's a good distinction for Middleboro. And I think it's in common upon us to continue that. So moving on here, some of, you know, Rich asked the question, what's the good and what's the bad? And I think that I mentioned some of the good. And I would say that that some of the bad involves the fact that that we have not received all that technology that we ordered. And there is some angst surrounding that. And we've received word from the Wally Computer, which is the wholesaler that we're dealing with, that those computers may not be in until the first week in November, which means that then they'd have to be all re-outfitted and made to be the district. They have to be get sort of branded by our district and then sent out. So that's going to be a delay. Obviously, it's a significant delay. It's a very, it's a big concern of ours. And I know that the tech department is really working their tails off, getting as much of our inventory out there. I did send a message home to all parents last week that indicated that we would be sort of prioritizing a distribution of our technology that we had. And we're trying to get all of that out to as many people as we possibly can. We realize it's a problem. We realize it's not a perfect world here with this computer technology. We're trying to make the best of it and asking families to get creative and work with us. Asking middle school and high school students if they have a unit at home to hop onto our bring your own device so that those units can get freed up for other students. That has happened. First thing Monday morning, I had a high school student come to my office with his with his unit from the high school and say, listen, I have another computer we just got and I want to return this out. And that was, some of you know, his name is Brendan Linehan. He happened to be Shrek in the play last year who came to school committee meeting. And he came down here with that technology first thing Monday mornings, which I thought was great. It was back in the hands of tech and now it's going to be in the hands of another student who needs it. So so that's sort of where we are and sort of a summary of this week, if you will. And I do want to bring Dr. Gates in to talk about some of the positives and negatives of the technology world right now. She's been working really, really hard. She worked all weekend. She's been, I think she has more emails than anyone in the district at this point. And she's been working on that list because every single one of those are important to her and she's trying to respond to them. But it's not humanly possible to respond to 800 emails or so in a day or two. So she's really, really working hard. And I appreciate everything she's done and the technology alongside with with all the computer technicians, Sean Siciliano, Mike Mills, our network manager. Everybody's on board, doing everything again, everything they can for all of our students in the district and teachers and faculty support. So Dr. Gates, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Lynch and school committee members. I just would like to echo those same sentiments. Everyone's been working real hard in the tech department and across the district. We've had a tremendous amount of support to the tech department, particularly with device distribution that has taken place over the last couple of weeks. Mr. Siciliano held down the fort at the high school with a tremendous team up there. And I did the middle school distribution with an awesome team here. Myself and Sean, along with the elementary administrative team, did the beginnings of the elementary distribution on Monday. And, you know, the first day at the secondary level for distribution was an interesting experience, but we learned a lot and we were able to improve our efficiency in getting devices out to people. So we do thank everyone for their patience with that. And really, everyone's just been so patient and supportive and just understanding of this situation. I think because of our transparency in the circumstances, people have been able to understand the why behind our decisions and be and their understanding is really appreciated. Just a little bit of an update on hotspots. We did receive the initial shipment late Monday afternoon. I was able to get those to the tech department for them to begin their onboarding process, which is, you know, the inventory, adding the asset tags, beginning to do the mobile device management of them. The next shipment of hotspots is expected soon. We've currently, I believe, we've received 58 out of the original order of 60. And through Mrs. Carolyn Lyons, we are able to order an additional 60 hotspots to support those in need. I just finished going through the data from all of our surveys for the requests for hotspots. You know, again, the request is exceeding what our current supply is. We're looking at some innovative solutions to provide internet access in the community. And once we have more concrete answers with that, much like we always are, we will be transparent in communicating that information. I'd like to just thank the faculty and staff for being so patient with everything. Monday night was when Mrs. Goodine was able to commit the schedules for the various schools, which allowed her to continue on with her work with ClassLink. ClassLink is our single sign-on solution that helps pull data out of Aspen to populate the different programs that we subscribe to. Mrs. Goodine has done a phenomenal job in learning that program and putting it into action for the district. She's been uncovering, you know, various glitches that some might be on our end, some might be on the OneRoster server end or on ClassLink's end, but she is just working nonstop, much like all of us, to make sure that all of our platforms are set up appropriately. So everyone's continued patience with that is appreciated. And I think because we are valuing our guiding principles of wellbeing, relationships and learning, that, you know, some of these glitches haven't impacted us too tremendously because we're taking the time to get to know one another again and connect as a school community, which I know in Middleboro is something that we value dearly, not just in the midst of a pandemic, but in terms of what we do every day as our mission statement says, every student, every classroom, every day. So, you know, that's the updates as I have them at this time. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the committee or the community may have.
So Melanie, I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. That came up in the chat today. One said that they were having trouble connecting today. Could that be due to, someone suggested to them that that could be due to bandwidth of the school. Is that possible?
I think if the if the student is at home and they're having trouble connecting, I don't see that as being a school issue. If they're at home and it's a connectivity piece, I think I think that might be within the home itself. I would say if you're having if you're having issues connecting to the internet, it's always a good idea to, you know, restart your router and just make sure that, you know, that you do that every now and then. I know that I do that in my own home, just to make sure that things are running as smoothly as possible. I think I just got an email this evening from Xfinity telling me to restart my router for some upgrade that's coming out. So that's always a good strategy at home. If we were experiencing an issue in the district, I don't think it would prevent you from connecting to our platforms. If we were having an issue, you might see it in terms of, much like we saw in school committee a few weeks ago, where the where the video was lagging a bit. I haven't heard of any network issues within the district. And I know Mr. Michael Mills, who's our network manager, he is so efficient in his work that he just handles it himself and and gets the job done, which I appreciate. So I don't believe that that would be on our end, but we can certainly explore if there are specific concerns, if you want to send them forward. We'll certainly investigate that on our end.
And Melanie, if people are, if children at school are having trouble connecting or with their bring, either with a laptop or their BYOD device, what should they do?
So at, so I sent out an email to all staff the other day to kind of help with this. I gave out the directions for how to access the Bring Your Own Device Network. I'd also provided our faculty and staff our internal list of names of students that have been registered for an account with BYOD. What we're seeing with some of the issues, when students enter their password incorrectly multiple times, it locks them out. And then Mr. Mills has to go back in and kind of release that device, release that account and allow them to reconnect. Currently, Mr. Mills is the only one that is managing that aspect of of the network. So, you know, with all that he has on his plate, he is working that in as efficiently as possible. I update the list regularly. Mr. Siciliano does as well. So every time we get a submission through the Bring Your Own Device registration form, we are updating it on our internal lists, which is then queuing Mr. Mills to create the account. When the account is created, faculty and staff do have access to the list and can look that up and see if a student has had their account established. And once it is established, they can follow those directions to connect. If they are experiencing trouble, at the secondary level, we've been mobilizing our technicians to provide support for that. I know specifically here at the middle school, through Mr. Rothmetsch's leadership, we have mobilized Mr. Earl Geddon, our new computer technology, our new computer technician here for the middle school. And he's been providing direct support for that. I know Mrs. Kate Forish has also been doing the same up at the high school. I would say if we're continuing to experience trouble at the elementary level, if teachers are not able to resolve those issues, they can certainly let me know or Mr. Mills. And we can deploy our technicians to help in that regard. But a lot of times the issues are more so with the device in terms of how, if they're able to disable pop-up blockers. That's one of the directions and the steps to connect to BYOD. And also, are they using the correct credentials? If they use the incorrect credentials too many times, it does lock them out. And then that triggers a step on Mr. Mills's end. So we'll continue to work through those things. And much like everything else, communication is key. Mr. Lynch was accurate in my my email is a bit atrocious in the moment. I try to get it down below 800 every night before I leave. Not quite there yet today, but we'll get there. But just, you know, communicate, let us know what the issues are and we'll work to resolve them. In addition to the the registration form for Bring Your Own Device, which is located on our district and all of our school homepages, you can also see a support form for our devices. And I would say you can also use that if you're experiencing a technical issue with our Bring Your Own Device Network as well. And when you when you submit a request through that, a notification does go through our technicians so that they can be aware of what concerns are out there. And, you know, just please know, everybody's working their tails off to try to take care of all of the needs in the district. And we'll continue to do so moving forward.
Dr. Gates, the other question too is, given the delay of devices, have you looked at other places to see if you could get devices?
I have. I haven't in the last couple of days because I've just been trying to prioritize my time with the tasks at hand that need to be done. I've been a bit hesitant to kind of dip my toe back into that water just because it has not paid dividends as of yet. But my focus right now is going to be on getting the hotspots out and the remaining devices that we have for the elementary level. The community can expect some communication. I would say by the by the beginning of next week on what our distribution plan is for that. I need to meet with Mr. Mills tomorrow and also conference with the superintendent so he's aware of what plans we have in place. But I will be, I will continue to explore what options may exist out there. I do know that it is still a competitive market, that that there are many other districts in the same boat as us and not just within Massachusetts, but really across the country. So, you know, we will look into those. But I would say for tonight and into tomorrow, my priority is really just making sure that we get the equipment that we have in district out and deployed successfully. But I will certainly pursue other options.
And Brian, I guess a question for you is, even though we haven't, we haven't received the devices into the school system because we made the purchase during the time of the COVID grant, we are able to get reimbursement for that, correct?
That is certainly our intent to file with Plymouth County for that money. We've been told it's reimbursable. It's certainly COVID-related. We had no intention of going one-on-one at the elementary level. And that's what we'll be in effect doing with this purchase. So I mean, that's basically what we're gonna do. I know, you know, there's some deadlines coming up in terms of we have to have receipts for these things, but hopefully they'll be understanding on the part of Plymouth County. And we have to, we have to confirm that. So I need to check with Lance Benjamina, who's coordinating things for the town, to make sure that at least we get a, you know, a bookmark in or a page marker that we have, we have note in with them that we bought these computers because obviously they're very expensive. You know, talking nearly half a million dollars.
Do people have other questions for Dr. Gates while she's here? Melanie, I appreciate you coming every single time. And, you know, I sent you a private note, which is, I hope you're like, you realize how much we appreciate your hard work and your dedication. So thank you for all your help.
Absolutely, just trying to do my job the best of my ability. There was some comments, if I could, if I could, Mr. Chair. The BYOD form, yes, that is something that was recently put out. But if you had, if a parent had completed any of our surveys and had indicated at any level that they were allowing their child to use a device, I had already captured that data and I had put those children on the BYOD list. So it, the lists are quite extensive. So if you had at any point indicated that your child was going to be using a personal device, you're already on that list. So there should be no need to submit a form. If your child comes to school with a device and they're looking to connect with the support of their teacher and the teacher says their name's not on there, the teacher can just send me a message and I'll add the student onto that list. So please be rest assured, families, you don't need to jump into another form if you've already indicated that you were allowing your child to bring a device to school. Thank you.
Dr. Gates, thank you, Dr. Gates. We really appreciate it. Mr. Lynch, there's a couple of questions that came up in the chat again. Can you talk a little about what's going on at lunches? There's some, seems to be some satisfaction about lunches.
I'm not sure what school that is and what that might be. But I would tell you that we unfortunately, due to the guidelines, when students take off their masks, they have to be six feet apart or they have to have some protective shield in between them. So at the Nichols Middle School, there are protective shields. As Ms. Farley saw the other morning, there are protective shields in between every student so that when they demask, they can eat. It's it's sort of like library carols, if you will, but they're clear so they can see people. So there might be issues there at the high school cafeteria. It's not like it was. It's not, you know, students aren't sitting around in a round table, you know, talking to each other and and having a good time and having fun. It's they're socially distanced, they're six feet by six feet apart. Some of them have found that. Some of them have found that if they go in little groups, they can at least. You know, in groups of four or five, they can at least talk and have a conversation that doesn't get too loud. But, you know, there are different setups in different cafeterias and the elementary kids are eating in the cafeteria. So. You know, that I I know that parent seems upset with the current situation, but it's unfortunately, it's not what it was. And it's not going to be what it was until till this, till this virus clears. And that's what we're, that's what we're looking at. I know that students are upset. I know. What probably was the best part of their day might be the worst part of their day at this point. So. And if a principal finds that things aren't working the way they should. You know, or or they could and and wants to go to a different setup, they can certainly do that. But. Right now, it is what it is based on the guidelines that we have from the state.
And the other question that came up was about buses. It seemed like the morning bus was fine. It just seems like the afternoon bus has been a little later than they're supposed to do drop off. Is that usually because of people? Sort of getting used and accustomed to the first days, Brian?
Right. I I I think that what happens with our buses is that every year. We go through a period of one or two or three weeks where the routes, we have to confirm. Parent bus drivers getting to know parents and who's picking kids up at stops and so there's more conversations than usual. I would say the morning probably goes smoother because there are fewer students in the morning. If you're around any of the schools when we have drop off, there's a lot of morning drop off. And then the kids are getting on the bus on the way home. So bus ridership in the afternoon is generally higher at the elementary and middle school. Sometimes it drops off at the high school when sports start and activities after school start. So I think that that we ask for folks' patience during the first week or two, until the routes are are sort of get to be known. If you're living, granted, we're 70 square miles, you know, and and the buses still have to still have to travel the same route. So they still have to travel the same distance, just fewer stops. So it should be a little bit quicker, but not. Not incredibly faster, but should be, it should be quicker. And that will happen over time.
Brian, there's a question about lunches again, about why kids can't use their phones during lunches.
I, that's an individual school decision and I would defer to to school principals. I can certainly check. And have answers or they can certainly email the principals directly or the assistant principals directly to inquire. As to why that might be, I can certainly check and report back at the next school committee meeting. I'm not sure if that's, is that at Nichols or is that at the high school? Is that?
I don't know, to be honest, Brian. I'm just seeing what I, what, you know, has been written and trying to relay that. The other question, Brian, too, is. Has there been any thought to plastic shielding around desks? That was a question somebody had asked.
No.
Okay, thank you.
There's some shielding around teacher desks in some instances. There's some shielding around. In in some of our rooms where we have our students, our highest need students in. And where teachers have asked, we're trying to get as much PPE in the room as possible, but not every student desk, no.
Okay. Anyone have questions for the superintendent, specifically around opening? Ms. Farley, you had your hand up.
Well, I was just gonna sort of talk about what you were just mentioning. At the high school, they're using the QR codes, so they're not doing assigned seating. And it's the middle school that is the question. And so they're talking about the middle school assigned seating and parents are basically asking. Can we assign seats next to a friend at least? And then, so again, that would be a principal question, you know, could that be discussed? But it was the middle school that was coming up, that was coming up about.
And this is all brand new, Mr. Chair and and Teresa, and and I think that, you know, once, and you have a new principal in that building. You know, who's establishing order and and. And I think that that is something that could be discussed with that principal and and she'll certainly listen to you, Mrs. Latenda. Has a couple of real good ears. She will listen to you and have a conversation with you about the why and and what changes might happen over time once people get into routines. Routines are huge at the beginning of school year and they're even and they're even larger at the beginning of this year. I know we have. Four educators on the school committee and you guys know that routines are are vital to the beginning of a school program, a school year. And that's what Mrs. Latenda is trying to establish some new routines at the middle school to make the school, to improve the school.
And so I would also add again, Brian, if people have specific questions about lunches, they should talk to their principal or assistant principal.
Yeah, those are things that that really aren't handled through the superintendent's office. I'll gladly assist if it becomes a major issue. But those are, those are some things that are at a school level and and definitely. Can be explained at the school level, maybe not to the person's satisfaction, but they at least can be explained.
Great, thank you very much. Any other questions for the superintendent? Seeing none, I will move on. Brian, do you have anything else for the superintendent's report?
I don't. Mr. Chair.
Okay. I should mention at this time, like I said, when Kate and Sam were in. The superintendent and I have had a conversation and we believe, given that we've started the school year, we can go back to the second and fourth week. Each month, starting in October. If that, if something were to come up that we felt needed, we would add obviously another meeting, but I just wanted to check with everybody to see if that was reasonable. For everybody at the point, because we're, I mean, you know, we're, we do have, we are talking about the opening of school and everything like that, but our. Sort of our agenda has been smaller and smaller.
Mr. Chair, if I might. I I just received a little feedback from from Mrs. Latenda, who's watching the meeting. And she said she has fielded many of these questions regarding the lunchroom. She wants people to know that the assigned seats are required because of contract tracing. But that friends seating near each other will happen, but it's just going to happen a little bit later. When students establish their routine. So Heidi is watching, Mrs. Latenda is watching, and those are her basic quick responses to to what was the conversation we just had.
Thank you, and we thank her for participating and giving us answers upfront.
Yep.
So again, I just want to make sure everyone, that makes sense for everybody if we go to the second and fourth. And if we have an issue, we'll clearly do it again. Then the next animal on our agenda is our consent agenda. Does Chair have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Wait a second.
Second.
Discussion. The consent agenda tonight is just a fundraiser for the class of 2021. It's face mask sales. I believe it's for their parents, if you look at the the form. Any further discussion? Seeing no one, Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Ms. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you. The other pieces were. We just had an update on a couple of the retirements and also the information piece about the pumpkin romp. Which will essentially be a around the town. Sort of people can decorate their homes and look nice for Halloween, which sounds really fantastic. And then there was a great donation to the Family Resource Center. So we want to thank everybody involved in that. Anybody else have any comments or questions or concerns?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I might. The pumpkin romp is something that Melissa Odie Morrison is organizing. She happens to be an art teacher with us at the MEK. But there is a a front page story on her plans in the Middleboro Gazette this week. So if you get the Gazette. Or if you want to go online, you can learn all about Middleboro's first pumpkin romp. So. Just a little explanation there.
No problem. And then also, we just want to thank Adam Pelletier for the donation to the Family Resource Center. That was fantastic. So we thank him. Anything else, anybody? The Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
No discussion, Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Ms. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. So thank you very much, everybody. We will see you the second Thursday in October. Again, feel free to reach out to any of us if anyone has any questions or comments, but thank you very much. Goodbye.